Good morning. We're going to start the planning commission hearing of July 13th. I'm calling the meeting to order. Those of you who have cell phones, would you please turn them off? If you have not submitted speaker cards and intend to speak, would you please submit them to the clerk? And be mindful of parking limitations outside. They will ticket you. We'll probably break sometime around 10 for a while or thereabouts to let people go move their cars. I'd like you to join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Ready to begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Need another signal, Anna, or we're ready for the roll call. Madam Clerk, roll call, please. Here.
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Rodriguez?
Here.
Thank you.
You'll note we're down to three today, obviously. Now's the time, set aside for public comments. These are matters that are not appearing on the agenda. I have no speaker cards. Does anyone wish to speak on a matter not on the agenda today? Seeing none, we'll move on. The next item is the approval of minutes for June 8th. Do we have discussion and/or a motion?
I'll move to approve the minutes of June 8th.
I'll second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Now we need to vote. We did have as first order of business a report by Director Stevens regarding regulations from the county dealing with marijuana and short-term housing. But because there's only three of us today, the decision is made to defer that until we have four or five of us. So we're moving on to the Grimes Rock Expansion Project, case number P L 150118. The applicant, Grimes Rock, requests a modification of CUP and an amended reclamation plan. That request or that application was approved by the planning director and appealed by the city of Moore Park. We're here today for a de novo hearing. Staff report?
Good morning, Chair Onstott and members of the commission. My name is Brian Baca. I'm the Commercial Industrial Permits Manager Emeritus of the Planning Division.[235.51][235.51](Laughter). And so I'll be doing the presentation today. As Chair Onstott said, this is another Grimes Rock Mine Expansion Project. You saw a similar case, at least in procedure, four years ago here at the commission. Case number is P L 160097, and I'll get right to it. This is just a location map, just to point out where Grimes Rock is, approximately halfway in between the cities of Fillmore and Moore Park on State Highway 23. As I do in every mining presentation, in order to operate a mine in the state of California, you have to have three things: a local permit to mine, which in this county is a conditional use permit, an approved reclamation plan, and an adequate financial assurance. This facility currently has all three, and they're here to amend the first two: a modified CUP and an amended reclamation plan. So the history of the site, in 1998, CUP 4874 was granted for a 15-year term, including the approval of a reclamation plan, and there were various permit adjustments that were granted at that time. That was the original approval for the Grimes Rock facility as we know now. On October 22nd, 2013, CUP P L 120159 was granted by the Board of Supervisors in an appeal hearing. A final environmental impact report was certified, and an amended reclamation plan was approved. At that time, in terms of the issue of the day, the mining facility was originally authorized to have 300 one-way truck trips per day. In 2013, the board approved the project to increase that to 460 one-way truck trips per day. So that is the existing setting under which the next application came before the county, which is the one before you today. That was filed in July of last year. That's the P L 160097 application. And again, they're asking for a modified CUP and an amended reclamation plan. That permit or that request was granted by the planning director on June 16th, excuse me, on June 16th, 2017, not '07, bit of a typo there, and it was appealed less than 10 days later by the city of Moore Park. And of course, we're here to address that appeal. The project description before you today includes some changes in the project, key of which are that the proposed facility is expanding onto 20 acres of disturbed land that was part of the former Best Rock Mining Project or Mining Facility located immediately adjacent to the west of the Grimes Rock Facility. So you can see the change in the excavation area is up by about 20 acres or 18 acres, and the CUP area goes up by about 21 acres, and that's taking the high wall area that exists between the two mining facilities. Now, in terms of truck trips during the week, Monday through Friday, they're staying the same. The peak hour trips are staying the same. The maximum for one-day truck trips, the absolute maximum on any one day, is staying the same. The only thing that's changing in terms of truck trips is the applicant is proposing to do 100 truckloads of export, that is, 200 one-way truck trips on Saturdays. Those truck trips would, additional truck trips, would increase the annual output of the facility from a million and a half tons per year to approximately 1.6 million tons per year. The truck trips by the applicant's proposal would only go northbound toward Highway 126. And that would be something that the applicant is self-imposing as part of their project Here's a plan, the excavation plan for the modified mine. The area that's outlined in yellow would be the new CUP boundary. The area that's in solid yellow is the additional sliver of land that's being added to this mining facility from the former and now closed Best Rock Products Mining Site. Some cross-sections, I like them. I'm a geologist, so I always throw cross-sections in my, and this just shows you the volume of material that's being excavated in a couple of different directions. Just some aerial photographs I dug up. This area here is the Best Rock, or excuse me, is the Grimes Rock Products Site. This is Best Rock over here. This is the high wall area that sits along the property line between the two mining facilities. So the proposed changes in the onsite operation would merely be to extend mining to mine out and remove the high wall and make the reclamation consistent between Best Rock and Grimes Rock. Now, the Best Rock Site is abandoned by the operator, and the county took the financial assurance and also prepared and had approved a reclamation plan, a revised reclamation plan, for the remnant Best Rock Site. As part of that preparation of a reclamation plan, two options for reclamation were approved as part of that reclamation plan. One involved the coordinated effort with Grimes Rock, which is now before you today, and the other involved without Grimes Rock. And so what is being proposed by the applicant today is to fulfill that option in which they mine through the high wall and have a consistent floor between the two mining Just another picture, you can, there's the high wall right there, you can just see the shadow, Grimes on the right and the abandoned Best Rock area on the left. This is what it looks like from the ground. Just some more shots of what Grimes Rock looks like. Again, there's the high wall on the right, and a view from up on the state highway, and the high wall sits back here. So the secret review of this project starts in 1998, where the EIR was prepared and certified by the county, and that was for the action to approve the original permit for Grimes Rock, CUP 4874. In 2013, as I mentioned earlier, a final environmental impact report was certified by the Board of Supervisors, and that, the certification of that document was not subsequently challenged, and that's the document upon which we base the addendum that was prepared for the current project in front of you today. Again, in the addendum that's in front of you today, I call that the 2017 addendum, there's no new petitionally significant impacts. The weekday traffic would remain unchanged, meaning that there's no new peak hour trips, and the new truck traffic on Saturdays would not result in a significant impact. And then, in terms of on-ground impacts, the land that's being added to the facility was already disturbed by mining activities that were conducted by the previous operator at the Best Rock Site. Just some key mitigation measures that were included in the certified environmental impact report of most interest is, the first one is that the mining facility was not allowed to have any additional peak hour trips, even though the total number of trips, daily trips, was going up. This is a chart, or a modification of a chart, just to show you the situation. On the left is the truck traffic situation prior to the closure and revocation of the Best Rock permit. That was the total truck traffic that was permitted in the Grimes Canyon area. RSC is the Rancho San Cristobal Mine, which is north of Grimes Rock. And so even with the permit approvals that were done in 2013, there was still less truck traffic permitted in the Grimes Canyon area than had previously been the case. What's before you today is, and you can see the two columns on the right involve Saturday. And so on the white column shows you that Wayne J. and Semex both are authorized to do Saturday trucking, and Grimes Rock is requesting to do 200. So there's a change in the Saturday trucking. However, in this case, the Saturday trucking is northbound only. The conclusions of the staff report presented to the planning director and attached to the staff reports you have is that the proposal is consistent with all the mineral resource policy. It conforms to the MRP, that's Mineral Resource Protection Overlay Zone requirements. It's compliance with the special use standards, and the CUP findings specified in ordinance can be made, and of course, the reclamation plan findings can be made. I always throw this in, these are the reclamation standards that are required by the state to approve a reclamation plan. And here are the comments from nearby cities. The city of Fillmore wanted them to pay a fair share of its contribution toward the cost of widening or other constructing improvements at the SR 23/SR 126 intersection in the city of Fillmore. And the applicant, we could not impose that, as there is no fee program currently adopted for that. The applicant has voluntarily added that condition into the permit, and so they are doing what the city of Fillmore asked. The city of Moore Park, in their May 8th letter, they requested, as you can read, that be denied unless effective mitigation is provided for the impact of trucks on Moore Park. And the city remains concerned about the continuing significant unmitigated impacts of truck traffic from this project to the city of Moore Park. And of course, they filed an appeal, and the grounds of the appeal are largely, they disagree with the decision and the level of traffic mitigation that was adopted and imposed by the Board of Supervisors in 2013 when they made their decision to approve the current permit for the Grimes Rock Facility. As counsel will discuss later, that permit and all the decisions associated with it are not before your commission today. The grounds of appeal, as I said, they disagreed with the traffic impact mitigation fee, and you can read the grounds of appeal, it's in your staff report, and they argued that the money collected in no way mitigates the impacts. And the staff response is quite simple to the grounds of appeal, is that the decision to grant the current permit and to authorize truck traffic and collect fees is no longer subject to legal challenge. No lawsuit was filed after the Board of Supervisors made their decision in 2013, and so all of their decisions become part of the existing setting for the current proposal. And the current proposal does not involve any new truck traffic through the city of Moore Park, and that's all that's before you today. And we have informed the city of Moore Park, that is, Public Works Agency and other parts of the county have informed them that we cannot collect traffic mitigation fees, it's not legal for us to do so, until they follow the requirements of the Mitigation Fee Act. And that's been informed to Moore Park several times and in writing from various agencies. And so to date, they have not followed the Mitigation Fee Act to establish a fee that the county can legally collect. And of course, we do have a reciprocal traffic agreement with the city of Moore Park, but that agreement requires them to follow the requirements of the Mitigation Fee Act, which they have not done. And so that's where we sit. The 2013 decision is over, and we can't revisit it, and what is before you today are minor changes on the physical site of the mine and 200 trucks on each Saturday headed northbound. I won't read you the staff recommended actions, they'll sound very similar to other things we've said. And with that, I'm ready for any questions. Oh, I should point out that we received a letter dated yesterday from the city of Moore Park. It's a six-page letter, you should have it, which flushes out some more of their concerns. You have in front of you a memorandum from staff that's probably still warm, prepared last night, given the time available, was in the middle of the night. And I'd like to go through a few items here, and I assume each of you have one of these. And, you know, I organize it in accordance with the city's letter. They talk about a traffic and transportation impact mitigation fee, and as I point out, there is no fee that's been adopted that we can legally collect. And then, they also sort of missed the boat, where they suggest that mitigation for 220 trips per day is what's owed to Moore Park or what should be granted to Moore Park, when they're taking trips, they're taking that number out of context. That's a number involving the maximum number of departures that can come out the southern gate of the facility. It doesn't have anything to do with the calculation of transportation impact fees, which are based upon average daily trips. And the average daily trips due to this project before you today that would go through the city of Moore Park is zero. And even if you go back to the 2013 decision, the average daily trips due to that decision were 48. So they've just completely missed it there. And so I've got a table on page 2 of 5, which shows you-
Excuse me, Brian.
Go ahead.
I have a question.
Sure.
Specifically on the Saturday traffic that is not going to go southbound on 23 through Moore Park, is that correct?
That's correct.
Where are those trucks going to originate to get to the gravel pits? Where do they originate from? Do you know?
Well, as the easy answer is, don't know exactly where the truck trips are going from. They are going, the destination would likely, I mean, the destination we're looking at is likely State Ready Mix, which is also operated by Grimes Rock, which is what the applicant has said, and other projects that are in the 126 corridor. But you're right, I don't know exactly where the trips are coming from.
So you can't say with certainty, then, that the city, in this case, the city of Moore Park would not be impacted by truck traffic on the Saturday, because we don't know where those trucks are going to originate from, is that correct?
That's correct. It'd be a circuitous route if you came from south of Moore Park, came to Grimes, and then drove to the 126 area, that'd be quite a long haul. It's much more likely they'd come down 126 and go up to Grimes in that manner, and go back up 126 where they're delivering, and then go from there back to their point of destination. And of course, the trucks that Grimes Rock owns and operates themselves would be coming from State Ready Mix, which is to the north. But you're right, I don't know where every single truck trip's coming from.
So Moore Park technically is correct in that they might be impacted or maybe will be impacted by truck traffic on Saturdays?
It's conceivable.
Perhaps the applicant can expound on that when he makes the presentation, thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Baca, don't leave yet, but before we go any further, I want county council to explain just what's at issue in this de novo hearing today.
Right, so procedurally, de novo hearing, de novo means to hear anew, and so the project before you, as Mr. Baca explained, is the modification to the conditional use permit that was issued in 2013. So the project before you is just that modification. It's not what was previously approved in 2013. And so you're just looking at the expansion and the Saturday trucking. That's the project that's before you.
And the extension of years?
And the extension of years, exactly. But you're not looking back at the truck trips that were approved in 2013. The city of Moore Park, that's the main basis of their appeal. If they were dissatisfied with the mitigation that was imposed, or that, you know, the impacts that would result from the truck trips that were approved in 2013, then they needed to file a lawsuit no later than around January of 2014 to challenge that decision. They didn't do that, so that's final, and so that's a done deal. They can't relitigate that now, or ask your commission to relitigate that now. And so going back to de novo, it means to hear anew, and so that means the actual modification request is before you today, and in order to approve the request, our land use hearing rules require at least three votes, and so all three of you would need to vote to approve or approve with additional conditions the proposed project in order for it to be approved. Anything short of three votes is effectively a denial of the request, and I'd be happy to take any questions now or later.
Do you have any questions?
County council, the question I do have is on the five-year extension. That's extending the entire CUP for additional five years, and does that in any way open up discussions on the entire CUP?
No, in terms of environmental impacts, no. Sure, you're pushing everything out, five years, but case law says that extending a CUP doesn't change the environmental analysis for that. And so it doesn't, it doesn't open up the approval that was made in 2013 in terms of truck trips. I think that's maybe what you're getting at. So it doesn't mean you can reach back and change that decision.
Chair Onstott?
Just a second, sir. So are you saying that because the 200 trips are within the 640, we can't question the 200 trips to the north?
No, you can, you can question the 200 trips to the north because, Saturday trips to the north, because that's, that's what's before you today. So that's absolutely fair game. But, but nothing, no other trips can you look at, you know, that were approved in 2013, because that's a done deal. So you should, exactly, so you should focus on the 200 Saturday trips.
Thank you, sir. Brian, for all of us up here, traffic is obviously an issue. Could you give us an overview of the traffic, truck traffic and vehicular traffic on Highway 23 going north and south?
Well, there's big trucks, and then there's small vehicles.
Well, I guess-
You'd like a more, a more mathematical-
Well, I'd, no, I'd like to know when the last traffic study of everything was done. I'd like to know the number of trucks operating under CUPs that utilize this roadway, whether they go north or whether they go south. I'd like to know what accident ratio of any exists. I'd like to know what the LOS is for 23 over Grimes. I'd like to know what improvements to 23 have been made to make it safer. This is just an overall, okay? And I'm asking a lot, I know. But I'd like to have an overall understanding of the traffic. And I know they made internal, the applicant made internal improvements to have an internal haul road, I assume, to get things off the grade. I'd just like an overview of everything so we can move on here.
Okay, Chairman Onstott, members of the commission, if I can take a brief moment to do a better response to Commissioner Rodriguez. While it's conceivable that some trips, some truckers would go the long way around, it's highly unlikely, because the cost of materials is directly related to how far you have to haul it, so it's generally the shortest route. And I would point out that the EIR that was certified by the board, and the project that was actually before the board when they approved what they approved, was a six-day-a-week project with 460 truck trips on each Saturday, a third of which would go through Moore Park. So even if a few trips of the 200 found their way through Moore Park, that was already analyzed and determined to be less than significant at a 460 truck trips per Saturday level in the certified EIR. So this is, this is the applicant requesting a portion of the project that was not granted by the Board of Supervisors in 2013. They'd like a small portion of what they had proposed to be granted this time. So just a clarification, the Grimes Rock project, and when it was reviewed by the board in 2013, they were very sensitive to the fact that it really is a difficult road at the top of Grimes Grade. The, you know, the steep road and the hairpin turns, which is where Grimes Rock, a third of their trucks, had been going. And part of the proposal at that time was that they were going to build a southern entrance road. And now that road has been built, and of course, it took a couple of years of design and permitting work through Caltrans to get that road permitted and built, and now all the, all the southbound, or most of the southbound trucks from Grimes Rock go out the southern entrance and do not go over Grimes Grade. And so that, and what the board said at that time was that you can't have an increase in the number of truck trips at the facility from the 300 to the 460 until the southern entrance was built. And so that was seen as a mitigation measure to improve traffic safety, and the board held Grimes Rock to it, and so did we. So they, they had a couple of years where they, even though their permit said 460, they were limited to 300 trips a day because the southern entrance road had not yet been permitted and built through Caltrans. So that was the main mitigation measure that was, for traffic safety, that was included in the Grimes Rock project. In terms of traffic studies, there were studies done in 2004, 2007, 2013, and 2016.
Was this just trucks or total traffic?
Total traffic. Now, in terms of trucks, the truck picture is in front of you on the screen.
Right.
Is, you know, the, the column on the left is what it was before Grimes, before Best Rock was, had their permit revoked by this commission, and they went out of business. And what is the third column to the, to the right there, 1980, that's the permitted volume of truck traffic as it sits today. And so, now that's not to say that every day they do, all the mines do 1980 truck trips. The delivery of mineral materials goes up and down with the state of the economy. And so they were doing far less when there was the middle of the recession, and now the mining operations may be up near their maximum peak because the economy has picked up. But that's the normal sequence of events, the normal condition that would be expected over time. You know, the demand for gravel goes up and down- You know, the, the demand for gravel goes up and down with, with the economy. And so that's, that's pretty much the answer. Did I answer your question, or should I?
Part of it.
Okay, can I, which part would I need to expand upon?
It's my understanding you can't mandate the use of state highways. You couldn't forbid any, these operators from using Grimes Grade, is that correct?
That's correct. They, you know, I hearken back to an earlier day where the county, in preparing some draft EIRs in the, in the 2003 to 2010 timeframe, made various attempts to include conditions of approval for fair shares of various things, and even regulation of truck traffic on the state highway. And it was determined, you know, around the time I arrived, that, that the law simply prohibits cities and counties from regulating traffic on a state highway. It's Vehicle Code Section 21. You, you simply can't do it. And, and the state law also prohibits a city or county from collecting a fee for the use of the state highway. See, now, what the county can do is we can impose mitigation fees when we recognize a significant environmental impact. And, and we do so when we can, and.
So it's limiting the truck trips?
Well, the, that's, that's a different matter. See, that's, that's a matter of land use. And you have broad discretion and authority under your ability to find a project either compatible with the community or not compatible with the community. That's, that's your discretion under the findings that are required to be made for you to grant a conditional use permit. But in terms of, you know, you could say you can have less truck trips. You have clear authority to do that. But you, you can't say that when the truck gets out on the state highway, you're going to go south, or you're going to go north. We can't direct traffic on the state highway, and we have no authority to tell people they can't park on a state highway. That it's the California Highway Patrol that decides, you know, how highways can be used and when somebody gets a ticket. It's, it's not through the county planning process. And we can't charge a fee for them using the state highway. We can only, we can only mitigate in accordance with the Mitigation Fee Act. And, and that's sort of been a problematic thing between the county and the city of Moore Park, in that they have not adopted a fee in accordance with that act. And it's the opinion of the county and our, our legal advisors that we literally are legally barred from collecting a fee for Moore Park when it's not in accordance with the Mitigation Fee Act.
What is the level of service rating for Highway 23? Especially, obviously, through the Grimes Grade area?
It's somewhere in the neighborhood of C to F.
And that means what?
Well, C is good, D is getting bad, and F is bad. And, and so it depends on where you are and what intersection you're at, as to what the projection is. And, and I would point out that some intersections are projected to go to F because of ambient traffic. The, the, the difference is, is that the, the project that was approved in 2013, that is, the basic 460 truck trips a day that are allowed for Grimes Rock, that's part of the existing setting. That's not an impact. That's, that's part of the existing setting. And additions of traffic due to growth and, and general uptick in the economy causing additional congestion, that's not an impact of this project. The project is part of the existing setting. So again, as, as council said, what you're limited to is the question of whether you think there's a significant impact by the 200 trips on each Saturday that would be going northbound, and whether that addition of traffic is compatible with the community, and you can make the appropriate findings to grant a modified CUP.
Do we have a history of accidents on 23 related to truck traffic and/or general traffic?
The, the issue of accidents on SR 23 is addressed in Section 4.1 of the certified EIR. There's a whole discussion in there. And, and the conclusion of the EIR, now certified, is that there's no significant safety hazard associated with the trucks. And, you know, it's, it's similar to a mining project that you guys, you guys, your commission. I'm retired.
Fair enough.
It's similar to the Ojai Mining Project you recently looked at, and the issue was truck traffic. And we had looked back in the records, and there was virtually no record of an accident in recorded time involving a truck from that particular mining operation. In this case, you know, it's a much busier highway, and there's a lot more trucks. So you have roughly 7,000 average daily trips. And about, you know, a third or a fourth of that would be trucks, mainly mining trucks. But of course, there's other trucks, you know, Vons and other delivery vehicles. They go up and down the highway every day. And I believe that they, they looked at a couple-year period, and there was something like 280 accidents in this entire stretch. Most of them were inside cities, and about 20 of them involved, involved trucks of some form.
But not necessarily hauling gravel and sand?
Right, right, because they don't, they don't, in the, in the Caltrans or the State Switters database, that's the statewide integrated traffic reporting system, they just identify the type of vehicle, not what they're carrying or who they're involved with, and the, and the age and sex of the driver of the vehicles involved.
I'm going to defer further questions that I have to later. Do you want to ask more questions now, or wait for the applicant?
I've got a couple of general questions. You used, talking about impact of, of traffic, and obviously, the impact of any, any accidents. You use the word significant impact or no significant impact. What does that mean? Define significant impact.
Well, I'm not sure how it's defined as I sit here in an EIR I wrote five years ago. It's sitting over there. I could, I could answer that question after, after reviewing it, but.
I mean, we use significant impact.
It would be a judgment call by the, by the traffic engineer as to whether there's a significant increase in the accident rate, or a significantly higher accident rate on this particular highway versus other highways. And, and, and so it's recognized that every highway and every intersection has an accident rate. Accidents happen.
Brian, you might want to address the significance threshold for circulation in terms of peak hour trips?
Oh, thank you. Yeah, the, the, one of the comments that Moore Park made is that there's really no analysis of the, the Saturday track, traffic in the EIR, which analyzes a six-day-a-week project. Well, that's because there's no specific analysis of that. It's because peak hour trips is what drives the threshold. The threshold of significance for impacts on traffic circulation is based upon peak hour trips. Their traffic is much lower on the weekends, and there are no peak hour trips on the weekends. In terms of traffic analysis, the peak hours in this area are 6:00 to 8:00 in the morning, and 3:00 to 6:00 in the afternoon on Monday through Friday. And there's no peak hours on Saturdays. That's why the, most of the focus of the analysis in the document is about peak hour trips, and why we have a specific mitigation measure to prevent any new peak hour trips. And so that's a very common thing. But the project description analyzed in the certified EIR includes a full load of traffic on Saturdays. Which, of course, the presumption is that if it's insignificant on Monday through Friday, where you have more traffic, and on, and the same number of trips on a Saturday where you have less traffic, it's less significant.
Was there a traffic study done on the Saturdays?
No, there wouldn't. Well, there is a traffic study done on Saturday, but there is no reason to specifically analyze Saturday, because it would be less impactful than any of the Monday through Friday days.
Have you driven it in the eight or nine o'clock on Saturday morning? The character may change somewhat, but, but I'll tell you, with the boats and the campers and everything else that come down to go over to the lakes and other places, it's, it's significant. It's just a different form of traffic. I live there. I see it every, every weekend. And it's significant to say that there's no peak traffic, just defies logic, as I understand it. People go to work on Saturdays, too.
According to the records, the, the, the level of traffic, the traffic volume, overall traffic volume is less on Saturdays and Sundays. And, and the standard traffic engineering doesn't recognize peak hour trips on Saturdays and Sundays, because the volume, the overall volume is less than Monday through Friday, where people are commuting to work and returning home from work.
Well, you can tell that to the people who drive it. They won't believe you.
So, Brian, if I could ask?
There are many who do not believe me.
I understand.
One of the things that we talked about is the increase in capacity because of the economy improving, and now they're functioning at full capacity. And one of the things I've been hearing from multiple people that live in the Moore Park area is that the traffic on weekends, including weekdays, has increased significantly. And I would imagine that might have something to do with the fact that now they are working, they're, they're operating at full capacity. So doesn't that, has that been studied, or has it not been studied since 2013?
Commissioner Kestley, the, the EIR studies and evaluates the potential impacts of the mine facilities operating at full capacity. And, and what people may be recognizing in the area is that the mine facilities, which during the recession were operating at 50% capacity, they're now operating at the full permitted capacity. But that's what the entire analysis was based upon, upon their full permitted capacity, which is just now apparently being realized. And, and there haven't been substantial changes, at least reported by Caltrans yet, in the overall volume of traffic between 2016 and today.
Mr. Baca, just a.
Go ahead. It occurs to me that since we're getting far afield here, we better do disclosures, having skipped over that matter. Commissioner?
I'm familiar with the area. I functioned as chief of police in Moore Park for three years in early to mid 80s. So I'm well acquainted with traffic on that highway and through the city of Moore Park.
I also am very familiar with the area. And any discussions that I have had with members or residents of Moore Park actually took place prior to even being notified of this. We just talk about traffic in general, because it is a significant problem there.
I live between Fillmore and Santa Paula and drive Highway 23 maybe three times a week or so. I had occasion to speak to an attorney friend of mine in Fillmore, who told me that sand and gravel trucks congregate before 6:00 behind the Vons Shopping Center adjacent to some residential facilities, engines idling, and it creates a nuisance. But other than that, that's my disclosure.
I do have a couple more items I wanted to touch on very briefly, if I, if I may.
Certainly.
In the memorandum, in the letter from the city of Moore Park, and in my response to memorandum, there were two other issues. One on water resources, about water demand, and one about greenhouse gases.
Right.
Well, the, the EIR evaluated a facility operating six days a week and producing 1.8 million tons of material per year. Under the proposal now, it would go to 1.6 million tons a year. And the generation of greenhouse gases and water demand are both proportional to the production rate. So the greenhouse gas production emissions and the water demand will be less than is disclosed in the EIR. So there is no increase in water demand. And besides, they have plenty of water, and the greenhouse gas emissions were less than significant and far below the threshold of significance recommended by the APCD. So there, there's nothing there. So now we can return back to trucks.
Actually, going back to the water, I do recall reading in the Planning Director's staff report on page eight that there's a 9% increase in water?
The, the 9% increase in water is from the current condition where they don't have Saturday trucking, which, everything is proportional to trucking. The, the rate at which this facility produces material can translate directly into the number of truck trips that are allowed to leave. So the additional 200 truck trips beyond what they're currently permitted to do would be a 9% increase in water. However, a, a much greater amount of water was analyzed, because the big, there was a larger project analyzed in the EIR, and that water demand, we had plenty of supply to supply a larger project, even larger than they're proposing now, and there was no significant impact on water. So that, that was entirely covered in the previous EIR.
I have a question. Is there a representative of the city of Fillmore here? Not seeing any. Fillmore strangely silent, at least from my perspective here on this issue. Are we to assume, maybe the applicant, Mr. Goldenring, could tell us later on what the situation is with the city of Fillmore? I would expect if they had a strong problem with this, this modification, someone would be here in some manner, shape, or form, or at least we'd have letters to that effect.
So Chair Anstot, I would say that the, the city of Fillmore is not strongly opposed. I met with the city of Fillmore Planning Director, Kevin McSweeney, as well as the city manager yesterday, on mining-related issues in general. And there is participation with the city of Fillmore, as there is with Moore Park. Every time we have a mining project, we offer to go out. We offer to go through the project with them, see about the conditioning. And Brian has been working with their planning department for months on this project. And, and the city has reviewed the project. They've conditioned the project. And Mr. Cochran has agreed voluntarily to put a condition in there that satisfied the city's concerns about a pro-rata share condition to, so when they come in to, to correct the, or to make improvements to the intersection that they, that Mr. Cochran would participate. So they don't have any objections to this particular Saturday trip.
So we're not on record from the city of Fillmore objecting to the 200 trips that go north through Fillmore?
No, if the city of, if the city of Fillmore was going to be objecting, they would have told us so last night, or told us in a letter, or had participated in this hearing.
I understand. Thank you. Any more questions at this time?
Yeah, just a general comment on this specific CUP. Recognizing, you know, the CUP's granted X number of trips, capacity number of trips. Those trips have occurred, have not been to capacity. But they've been within over five days. Those emissions are over five days, because that's what they've been operating. So we're spreading that the emissions from, the allowed truck trips from five days to six days, if we approve Saturday? Am I correct on that? In other words, are we going to foul the air another day? And I realize that their mines are operating.
It's within the 640, isn't it?
Right.
The, the, it's 460.
Oh, 460.
Yeah, they're allowed 460, currently allowed 460 truck trips, Monday through Friday.
Right.
And they're, and, and zero on Saturday.
Right.
So you would add from the current permitted condition, 200 truck trips. That additional, the additional pollutant emissions, including greenhouse gases, is fully analyzed in the certified EIR. Because the certified EIR evaluated a six-day-a-week project with all of the six days having 460 trips, you know, per day. And, and that, the finding of that certified EIR is that that's not a significant impact on air quality. At least not the criteria pollutants and greenhouse gases.
There's that phrase against significant impact.
So, but you're correct, that, that there is going to be a slight increase in, in pollutant emissions due to this permit action that's being requested.
Okay. Regressing to a question, or question that Chairman Anstot had. You mentioned, you brought the, brought up the issue of the Ojai Quarry we dealt with in the past, as it relates to restriction of travel on a state highway. Correct?
That's correct.
As I recall, that particular CUP had restrictions on operation of the mine. The trucks could not enter the mine before a certain period, a certain time in the morning. Is that correct?
That's correct, Commissioner Rodriguez. Well, actually, there was a period of time in which they were not allowed to have trucks depart from the gate at Ojai Quarry. And, and controlling the operations of the gate, which is on the CUP property, that is within the discretion of the decision-makers of the county. Once they're out on the highway, that's where we lose our authority to do anything. But you can control in and out of the gate.
Okay. And this, and I've read a lot of this stuff here statistically and otherwise. I seem to recall reading as part of the original CUP, and correct me if I'm wrong, the hours of operation began in the morning at 7:00, and I assumed that meant when the trucks were leaving? And the proposal before us now is 6:00 in the morning?
Commissioner Rodriguez, at the, at the board hearing, the, the board carefully crafted a compromise between the warring parties, where, which was the high school, to. between the warring parties, which was the high school, to have a restricted period about 20 minutes where trucks could not leave the quarry.
Excuse me.
In exchange for that, they moved the time to 6:30 so that the operator on a day would get the same number of trips out, even though he would be avoiding this particular 20-minute period which was critical in front of the high school.
Yeah, I recall that. But I'm talking specifically about what we read on this CUP modification request. Aren't the original hours of operation beginning at seven o'clock? And I assume that would mean trucks entering and leaving, trucks leaving the facility.
Six o'clock.
It is six o'clock.
Yes, for this facility. I mean...
And the Saturday proposed hours on this application are what?
I believe seven to seven. I'd have to, I'd have to look. You've caught me.
Perhaps the applicant can clear that up for me. Thank you.
Can you explain to me why the restriction on hours through Moore Park was approved, but there's no restrictions at peak hour time going north? I mean, obviously, we have people from the Santa Clara Valley driving to work in the Conejo and related places. Why didn't they get the benefit of a diminished trips during that period or no trips during that period of time?
Chair Onstott, the restriction on no new peak hour trips applies to both northbound and southbound trips from the Grimes Rock facility. That is the 2013 approval that is not before you today. So the restriction on peak hour trips applies to both directions. There's no directional thing on the restriction of peak hour trips.
I thought there was, I thought that, my recollection of what I read said that there was only allowed 64 or something trips south. And I don't remember any during the peak hour. And I don't remember any restriction going north during peak hour.
There's an overall restriction of 300 peak hour trips on any day. They can't go over 300 peak hour trips. There was a separate restriction that was included in the previous permit, the 1998 permit, of 64 trips southbound during the peak hour.
Does that still stand?
That still stands.
So they are, okay.
But that's, see, we can control the total amount of trips. We just, as soon as they leave the gate, that's where we lose control.
Okay. Any more questions? Don't go far, I'm sure we'll need you again. Yeah?
Brian, I just kind of have a, I'm sorry, Mr. Baca, I just have a question, a general question. And I'm trying to understand a little bit better about traffic impact mitigation fees. And does Grimes Rock pay traffic impact mitigation fees already?
As part of their permit that was granted in 1998 and in 2013, they paid traffic impact fees of various forms.
Okay.
There was no fee available that Moore Park had done. And initially, the county had collected a fee based upon the county unincorporated Moore Park area fee. And then it was later determined that we did not have the legal ability to do that because...
Is that the $15?
That's the $15. But we, even that, we didn't have the illegal ability, we determined later, to collect that fee because it had to be based on a fee study that was properly adopted in accordance with the mitigation fee act. So that money was refunded to the applicant because we had no legal ability to hold it.
And then one more fund that I noticed is the hauling truck noise reduction fund program. Is that also something Grimes Rock contributes to?
Yes, Grimes Rock and Wayne J. Sand and Gravel both voluntarily included that condition in their permits. So there's currently $50,000 in that fund.
And that is for replacement of windows?
Yes, that, when your planning division staff gets the time around to it, we're going to be notifying all the people along SR 23 between Fillmore and Moore Park of the availability of these funds to replace single-pane windows with double-pane windows.
Is there a lot of residential out that area? I don't recall.
No.
I don't think so.
Primarily in the city of Moore Park, there's some older residences along Walnut Canyon Road, and that would be prime candidates for this money.
Okay, thank you.
Just one more question. I need a big picture. Obviously, the need for sand and gravel hasn't diminished. The economy's improved, and I understand that other applicants could be coming forward in the near future. And it seems to me what we're going to do here today is balance the need for the aggregate sand and gravel and the need for construction and related purposes with the use of state highways, which in my mind are clearly overburdened. So I guess I need, maybe I should be asking the applicant this, Brian. How important is the Saturday haul? What is the situation regarding the need that we should be balancing here against the potential for health and safety? I mean, there's always a balance. Do you feel comfortable with that, or should I ask the applicant?
Oh, I'm comfortable answering any question, whether my answer is looser or not is for others to judge. I would go back to a presentation that I believe I gave to your commission and to the Board of Supervisors involving the Wayne J. proposal, which was the most recent mining proposal to come before the county. And we have the State Department of Finance, which gives us a 50-year projection of population in the county of Ventura. And we also have the work of the Department of Conservation, which looks at the permitted and available reserves of aggregate materials in the county of Ventura. And you put those two together and you create a chart. Well, when the Wayne J. project was approved, we were, and it went from 72 trips a day to 240. And you can think of gravel as truckloads, you know, rather than tons, just truckloads. When they went from 72 to 240, that made the county meet the demand curve estimated by the state, that's the State Department of Conservation, for aggregate reserves, just meet it, and in two years, we would be below the curve again. Because there's an upward rising curve due to population and the per capita consumption of aggregate that, the data tells you that over time, you're going to have to have more and more capacity, that is, truck trips per day, to serve the need in Ventura County. And so right now, we're right at the cusp, at the state of grace, or just slightly below because that was, that data was from 2015. And what it showed is that in two years, we go back into deficit again. So on a long-term basis, I mean, over decades, it tells you that there's going to have to be additional aggregate facilities to serve the daily need for aggregate. And, you know, so proposals like this are not going to be isolated, they're going to be periodically coming before the county decision-makers. And it's an unfortunate geologic fact that the primary location of aggregate minerals in the county of Ventura is on Oak Ridge, which is the ridge in between Fillmore and Moore Park. That's where the material is. So you can anticipate that...
Fillmore will have an ocean view soon?
Well, that's one, I guess I could call that a class four positive benefit. But that's, but this is just the reality. And the reality over long periods of time, and we've seen here and elsewhere, is that mining, which used to be conducted in riverbeds, where nice, fresh, modern-day aggregate is, is largely being phased out because of the significant environmental effects and the endangered species problems, and going to consolidated rock mines that are in the hills. In areas that don't have, you know, ancient beach and river deposits like Oak Ridge in the county, in other areas, like in San Diego County where they don't have that, they actually mine granite mountains with dynamite, and then they crush granite down to the size needed for aggregate. So we have a much more benign method of mining here that is occurring in other places which don't have ancient river and beach deposits.
Take a seat, but don't go far. Okay, I'd like to call on the applicant now to make a presentation. Mr. Goldenring seems to be upping at us. Please state your name and address.
Thank you, Peter Gold.
And if you would, Peter, address the bigger, the big picture.
I'm happy to. If I get lost in the weeds, yell at me. And I would ask for help, Brian. How do I go to the slide, which was the excavation plan?
Push the bottom, the bottom one, go back, stack.
Peter, I'm probably going to take a five or so, 10-minute break at 10 o'clock so people can move cars and take care of business.
Help me. Help me.
You don't know where to look, guys?
Well, Brian's helping me, and I appreciate it. Thank you, Brian. The first thing I want to do is I want to thank your staff because it may not be in the paperwork you received, but Moore Park, as they did when we last had this road with them, transmitted their letter, this time at 4:08 PM. So that, of course, impacted me, but it also impacted your staff. And I, as you know, Chair Onstott, I have for some time been trying to urge your commission to think about timing requirements for the benefit of everybody.
You're not alone.
And I'm not, and perhaps I'm being self-interested in that regard, but, you know, when I, when I see your staff having to work till, you know, through the night to respond to something that easily could have been, perfect, thank you, Brian, could easily have been given earlier, it's just as a bit frustrating for me. And so I want to on the record thank your staff and specifically Mr. Baca emeritus because I don't think he's signed on to work till midnight at this stage of his career. Let me, if I can, go back just a little bit around the question of how we got here. Because this really is a very minor thing. We can get into the weeds about the trucks, and I'll talk about that in a second. But I think perhaps a little bit of how we got here might be helpful. The mine, which is not the yellowed part on the left side, the Grimes Mine, was approved in 2013. And with all the truck trips that we've talked about, we went through the process here, we went through the Board of Supervisors, we have a certified EIR, we had a long hearing in front of the board. Moore Park at that time was asked by the chair, and I'm trying to remember who the chair was, I think it was Kathy Long, but I'm not positive, because they were there with their lawyers, and they were asked specifically, "Do you have the mitigation fee act requirements in place so that we can condition the project on a payment?" And Moore Park said no. And they were asked, "Why not? When are you going to do it? We'd like to include those in what we're doing." And there was no answer from Mr. Cuny at the time. And so the letter that they wrote you, which we got at 4:08 PM, which seems to allude to some expectation that some fee was going to come out of that 2013 project, is, with due respect to Moore Park, simply inaccurate. Because this was a very specific conversation, they were specifically asked by the board on this topic. And my memory, and I'm going back in the cobwebs, I think even Supervisor Zaragosa looked at them and said, "Why not? Why haven't you done this? This is not a hard thing to do." And so they knew that they hadn't done it, they knew that the board was making the determination based on them not having to do it. They had no expectation of doing it. And so they didn't appeal. And so it's just not the issue here today. They are engaged in a process, which I'll discuss in a minute, which in part will answer your question, Chair Onstott, about the future. Because the future is, you're not going to see much in the way of any new projects, certainly through Moore Park, because of what model Moore Park is doing now and what they've accomplished. And I'll be putting that into the record. But in any event, so the large picture is, the mine is what it is, it is what it is, and it's not changing. At or about the time that this went before the board, Best Rock, which is to the left, which includes in part that yellowed area that Mr. Baca describes, was operating outside of its CUP application, had violated a ton of its CUP obligations. And you may recall that there came a point in time, I believe after the CUP proceeding with Grimes, where staff came to you to terminate the Best Rock CUP, take their $800,000, $900,000 bond to do reclamation. The reclamation plan of Grimes and the now what I call old-voided, violated reclamation plan of Best Rock had two critical components to it. One was that the floors of the two mines, at the end of the process, would essentially be the same. And there would be a slope for water management, and so there would be a coming together of the two mines that were adjacent to each other. Best Rock, for its part, at the time it was terminated, had gone significantly below its floor in operating outside its CUP, and created what I would like to refer to as a lake. So in this yellowed area, there's a lake, where it goes below the floor, water gathers, it's just, and so it's a huge reclamation problem. The second thing Best Rock did was violate the two-to-one slope requirements. When you take down a mountain, you have to have a two-to-one slope for stability purposes and for management going forward. And what Best Rock did on its side in that yellow area is it did a vertical, again, outside of its CUP, right up to and actually encroaching into the Grimes Rock property. So what the county said to Grimes in its original project is, which was approved in 2013, "You're going to take your side down to this anticipated floor where everything's going to merge and everything's going to be flat, and there's going to be a good water management and reclamation process. And you're going to do a, you're going to do a two-to-one slope on your side of the work." And after that CUP, and Best Rock's gone, everybody looks around and realizes that on the Best Rock side in this yellow area, there's a lake, there's no floor to merge to, and it's in many ways straight down so that my client's side of the properties now has stability issues because there's no two-to-one slope there to agreed-upon contemplated floor. And on the high wall, what's referred to in the original area, on the Best Rock side, it's straight up, which makes my client's property unsafe and substantially impacts my client's ability to mine the material. Because you can't mine the material against a straight vertical that drops down hundreds of feet. So it created operational problems and safety problems. So at that point in time, in late 2013, 14, there became a series of conversations. And the conversations were involving three parties. They involved Mr. Baca and folks at the county about, "What are we going to do with this Best Rock nightmare? They're gone, we got this money, how are we going to reclaim it for the public benefit?" My client, that had this problem operationally, based upon the violations by Best Rock, and the Best Rock landowners, who now owned the property and ultimately were liable if the reclamation dollars were insufficient. There are two ways to solve the Best Rock problem. One way was to bring in a bunch of D8 cats and other big earth-moving equipment, and you might even have to import material, and build up the wall on the Best Rock side, rebuild the hill that they took down that's two-to-one, push the dirt up against gravity, and build up against the wall on my client's side until my client takes the floor down. That's one. Hugely expensive. The county believed that it could do it within its budget. Our analysis was that it would cost millions of dollars, and the county would have a nightmare around that. Best Rock landowners were freaking out. The other alternative, which is the practical solution, and it took a lot of conversations that involved Ms. Prellhart, Mr. Baca, and the Best Rock landowners, and that was to a... And that was to essentially identify the area that's in the yellow and say, "We're going to move this into Grimes Rock." And by doing that, my client becomes obligated to do the reclamation. My client now has 18 or 20 acres of obligation of reclamation. But if it's within my client's mine area, we can push down the high wall into that area and capture the dirt. We can push down material using gravity to fill in the lake, create the floor. And we can mine down on our side on a two-to-one slope in the phasing that's in our CUP. And so that makes operational sense for my client. My client's able to use material that otherwise now we would be looking at and saying, "We can't touch it. It's not safe to touch it because of what happened on the Best Rock side." So there's an economic value. And it removes the problem from the larger Best Rock reclamation area. Because now, from the county's perspective, by moving this property into my client's ownership or sphere, my client becomes the obligate, obligee to mine it, reclaim it, and merge it with the revised reclamation plan for Best Rock and my client's Best, Best Rock plan. So when, when Mr. Baca talks about there were two options, those were the two options. And with a lot of, it took a lot of work. The best, there are 15-plus Best Rock owners who had all different interests and all different stuff, and it was like herding cats. And we finally got to a point where it was agreed that this is, this was the way where my client could continue to proceed logically, consistent with the underlying CUP. It removed the burden from the county of a much more difficult project of pushing dirt up and creating something. It ultimately removed the legal obligation from the county around this and allowed the project to move forward. So that's, at the bottom line, how we got here. And it was a cooperative, quite lengthy, but cooperative process of how to solve a problem from a mine operator who simply walked away and left a nightmare. And sometimes the conversations got heated, and sometimes they were practical. But at the end of the day, everybody came together. And I will tell you, my client's sitting in an escrow where if this proceeds, this property will be ultimately lot-line adjusted into the mine to consummate the legal ownership and responsibility for the reclamation plan. So from a large picture, that's the problem that came on the table in 2014. And the structure wasn't able to be accomplished for the better part of two years for a whole host of reasons and a bunch of documents and leases and all, all kinds of stuff. But that's what's sitting in place in order to accomplish this solution that works for my client, works for the county, and works for the Best Rock's landowner. So with that in mind, then, let me turn my attention to the, the issues of time and also the larger picture and part of how we got here. In the 2013 CUP, the requirement was my client put in the south entrance. I think Chair Odstott, you discussed it. Implement that through Caltrans, put in a scale house, put in a control. And the concept was, from a land use perspective, you only have trucks going down through Moore Park through this specific entrance. You have to keep track of them. You have to do Waymaster tickets, you know, all the sorts of things to control all Moore Park-bound traffic. And that was the concept of the CUP, which my client agreed to. And at that time, staff and my client thought, "Okay, well, so that's going to take a year." And the CUP was written with, "Okay, you do it within a year, and we can extend it for a year or a little bit more if we need to." Well, I will tell you that the shocking inefficiency of Sacramento, shocking was, is a nice word, resulted in that process and that southbound entrance not being completed until this year. So from 2013 to 2017, my client's operations never expanded in terms of truck trips or operational things in the 2013 broader CUP. Because the condition of the county was, until you do certain things, you don't get to do that. So answering the question about the extension of the CUP, in the process of solving this problem, taking this, this responsibility, it's going to be not an inexpensive process to my client, there's no question. It facilitates him solving the problem and being able to use material that he would otherwise have to come in for a modification on because he couldn't take down the high wall, couldn't do the mining that's contemplated. So there's an economic benefit. But my client's been tied to the old, late 1990s CUP. So we said, as part of this process, "It seems fair to us, since everybody thought by 2013 or early 2014, we were going to be able to have this larger project, we ought to be able to capture the years that we've lost operationally because of all of this." So the five years is an effort to capture the lost years that have included not just Caltrans, but also the nightmare of the Best Rock effort to solve all of these issues. So in terms of impacts, the truth is, from 13 to now, we've been the old mine operation. And the additional five years don't add anything more, in our view, other than what was originally contemplated to be, be available by the end of 2013 or early 2014. So in terms of where, where we're at, we have a project that is essentially designed to solve this problem and in doing that, allow some limited truck trips on Saturday, which were fully analyzed in the approved underlying CUP, to capture the additional material. Because from a mine operation, we, we now are having to do all this work. We're getting this additional material around doing it. A mine's ability to operate is driven by the ability to have truck trips. And if we don't have the additional truck trips on Saturday, we now have this additional work and this additional material that we're trying to manage, and we don't have any trips to do it in. So the trips are the minimum amount necessary for us to capture this additional 18 acres and all the additional costs and operations associated with it. So in regard to those issues, the City of Fillmore was fully engaged in this process. And the City of Fillmore's request was that our client, my client, agree to, I think it's Condition 72, which is a fair share condition. The county's position is, there's no legal requirement. They can't mandate that. But my client, in the first go-round, if you may recall, Fillmore actually wrote a letter supporting the project, which, at the point in time they wrote the letter, included the Saturday trips. Those Saturday trips only went away in the day-long hearing before the Board of Supervisors. And Fillmore supported that project, including the Saturday trips. And they're supportive of this project. And all they've asked is that we voluntarily include what's called a fair share provision so that when and if Fillmore does certain work, my client will pay its fair share. And that's been my client's attitude with Fillmore. Moore Park's a bit different. Because the truth of what's happening is, Moore Park doesn't want to engage in the legal process of a traffic mitigation fee. And while it may be too strong a word, and I apologize if it's offensive to anybody, Moore Park engages, at least from my experience in this process, in what I call governmental extortion. And here's the truth, Chair Odstott. You will not see any more mine projects. You will not see any traffic studies. And you're not going to see any issues around impacts to Moore Park. Because Moore Park's now created a model. And I don't know if anybody's seen the C-Mex deal. It's public record now. But the C-Mex deal, and I have it here, is really quite simple. Moore Park went and sat down with C-Mex. And C-Mex said, "We're going to put in an application where we're going to have our 1,100 trips, 980 through Moore Park. We're going to be getting an approval to go for another, I think it's 40 or 50 years." And what do you want to do? And here's what Moore Park said. "If you will pay us $1,500,000, $100,000 down in the balance at certain points, then without even reviewing an EIR or SEIR, without any traffic studies, without any public hearings, without reviewing any conditions that the county wants, without any TIMF studies or contributions..." I'll read the language because it's really quite shocking. "...the city agrees and covenants not to oppose directly or indirectly through third parties via financial, strategic, oral, written, or under other means C-Mex's project as proposed in the modification application, including but not limited to all proposed construction, development, uses, mining operations, hauling activities as set forth in the modification application, and all construction, development, uses, mining operations, and hauling activities subsequently approved by the county. For purposes of disagreement, not oppose means the city agrees not to submit to the county a letter of opposition to approval, and the city will in no manner question any aspect, procedural, substantive, or otherwise of the modification application, nor speak at, nor submit anything, nor encourage anyone else to appear or oppose any aspect of the project."
Sounds like something you'd write.
So here's, here's the truth. C-Mex and Moore Park made a $1,500,000 deal. So before the county staff issues an EIR, does a traffic study, does any analysis like you were suggesting, looks at anything around this, we're not going to say a word. C-Mex made that deal for $1,500,000, $100,000 down, unallocated, no control over the money. Party's over. C-Mex went to San Cristobal, made the same kind of demand. C-Mex went to Wayne J. They wanted $1 million-plus dollars from Wayne J. to not appeal and to not oppose. City came, not C-Mex, excuse me, City of Moore Park, I apologize for opposing, for, for my stating. So I said, "Well, that's an interesting concept around policy and planning." So I picked up the phone, and I called the City of Moore Park and said, "Gee, how do we get in on this?" And I was told, "Well, it's for you. It's $340,000." And happy to do the deal. So if my client had agreed to pay the City of Moore Park $340,000, you would not be hearing this matter. You wouldn't be having a conversation about Saturday trips. They wouldn't have written a letter about, "Oh, my gosh, we're concerned about water." They would not have written a letter saying, "Trucks emit materials into the air. We're so concerned about pollution." Nothing. So you won't be hearing any more mining applications that involve Moore Park so long as Moore Park can roll out this governmental extortion. And my client said, "Uh, no. Not going to participate in that. Not going to be a party to that." And so I would respectfully submit that you got a letter at 4:08 PM because we said, "We're not going to that party." And everything in that letter is hogwash. Because if I went to this gentleman right now and said, "Okay, uncle, 340 grand." And their initial demand was $100,000 of it down, and then they changed it a day or two ago to $50,000 down, he'd stand up and say, "We withdraw our appeal." So from a public policy perspective, what you have before you, the truth of what you have before you, is a project that's designed to solve a problem in the county, not created by my client, not created by your staff, but with a lot of effort solved and accomplished, that Fillmore, that is the place where the truck trips are going, doesn't oppose it. There isn't a single trip that's going to go out of the southbound entrance, and I'll talk about that in a second, Commissioner Rodriguez, not a single trip. And Moore Park's appeal is the collection of the traffic mitigation fee for the original permit was not conducted in accordance with city-county temp agreement. That's their appeal. And if we write them a check for 340 grand, this gentleman will stand up and say, "Deal." Water goes away, air goes away, trucks of Fillmore go away. But we're not impacting Moore Park. So answering your question, if you look at the condition, the condition around the Saturday trips is on page five. And the question that was posed to us by your staff was, "Once the trucks are on the road, it's a public highway. How do we make sure that these 200 trips aren't in fact going through Moore Park?" And the answer was, "We'll control the trucks. They're going to be Grimes-controlled or owned trucks." So we own that obligation. We control, it's not like the Independence. So its transport of material shall be conducted only by Grimes Rock-owned or Grimes Rock-controlled trucks. So if, so, so we control how the trucks roll, even though from a legal perspective, the county can't control where trucks go once they hit the road. We know trucks don't go up the grade. Nobody goes up the grade. That was the whole point of the internal, southbound gate. And so they're only going to go to the left and down. But number two, we have the ability to control the trucks because they're controlled or owned by us. So those are the only trucks allowed on Saturday, is they have to be ours. And so from a practical point of view, that's the way we've implemented it with the county, where there will be zero impact on Fillmore, excuse me, on Moore Park from these 200 trucks because they can only be ours. They can't be Joe Blow-independent from some other project. Where there's no question that, that the way we have to control that truck is we have to put them through the internal road and out the southbound entrance. And under the original CUP, my client's required to monitor and control that southbound ingress and egress. Because all trucks into the mine from, through Moore Park are required to go through the, that south, southbound entrance. through the, that south, southbound entrance, which is closed on Saturday. So they can't come from Moore Park and go in because you're not allowed to access the mine under the original CUP if you're coming up Moore Park, except through that southbound gate. And that southbound gate is locked on Saturday, and that's required under this original 2013 CUP. So you can't get in that way, and they're trucks we control, which means they have to come up off of 126 and through the northbound gate. So that was the practical business way and legal way that we were able to accomplish what we think is the truth of the matter, which is all of the trucks which we will own or control have to come in or out of 126, have to use the north gate because the south gate's closed on Saturday. So we, we're standing before you, and i-if you look at the, the CUP modifications, virtually everything here, there are really only three pieces to it. One is the ability to do what you see up here on the map, which everybody agrees is the practical economic solution to solve a bad actor's leavings, if I can describe them that way. It's the ability to have the truck trips only south, only northbound through Fillmore to help accomplish this, and it's a capture of the time that we've lost in all this madness. That's what the CUP is. That's all the CUP is. And, but for Fillmore, the county's determination was, this was so minor, this was a planning director level event. This was not even something that was required to come to the planning commission. And the only reason we're here is because my client said, I don't think so. We're not going down the governmental extortion road because Moore Park's counsel has been absolutely crystal clear to me. If you, if you don't do this and write this check, which they admit has nothing to do with the Saturday trips, because they admit the Saturday trips don't go through Moore Park, that, they, they have said to me unambiguously what they said in the appeal, the 340 grand is for the 2013 CUP. That's what they said to me. If you don't write that check, which you don't owe, and make the C-Mex deal, we're going to drag you through the mud. So here we are, getting dragged through the mud. So I would, I said that I was going to call it extortion, and, and some people may disagree with me, but I think it's a horrible event around your efforts and your staff's efforts to credibly look at projects, accept what people say to you as being presented in good faith and honesty, accept letters from cities as being a true, honest communication around what issues are or concerns really are. And so you sit here and you read the City of Moore Park letter about, oh, my gosh, water, oh, my gosh, air, and you wonder what's going to happen with the projects as they come before you. And so I'm back where I started. You're not going to see anymore if this continues. And I will be so bold as to tell you that if my client's application is not approved here, then that will validate the Moore Park threat. And I'm not suggesting that you may not have reasonable questions or concerns or things that we can answer on behalf of the applicant or tweaking that might be appropriate, and I'm happy to have that conversation, but that's the truth of it. That's the hard, cold truth of what's unfolding in this county. And it started with the Broad Beach deal, where under the Broad Beach deal, which I'm sure you've all heard about, the underlying records show that Moore Park said to Broad Beach, unless you make a deal, the no trucks go through our city for your Broad Beach material, we will oppose you at every single agency that we possibly can. So Broad Beach made that deal. And here's what's going to happen in this county, and I'll say it publicly, here's what's going to happen in this county. The C-Mex deal is made. Your staff is going to process the C-Mex deal. There's going to be no opposition. So what's going to happen at the planning department? Maybe it comes to you, but I think it happens at a planning director hearing. Moore Park's not going to stand up. They got their money. They made their deal. I read to you their contractual approval. And here's the model of what's happened and what my client has to deal with, and what ultimately the county has to deal with in terms of how it decides to handle land use planning with Moore Park. C-Mex gets 1,100 trips roughly. They are actually using about 600, give or take. So now C-Mex gets its CUP. It goes to Broad Beach, says, I have your 400 trips available every day that you want because C-Mex has those as extra trips. You have to hire the trucks, Broad Beach. Broad Beach says, happy to hire the trucks. Trucks, you can't go through Moore Park. You have to go through Fillmore. And now from a land use planning, if you buy onto this stuff that's coming down from Moore Park, from a land use planning, Fillmore gets hurt. And that's the horrible of this, because now Moore Park has dumped on Fillmore on the gap in the C-Mex trips, and you're never going to see the C-Mex CUP. Because the one party that has anything to say, unless Fillmore chooses to now activate itself, the one party that would say anything is Moore Park. And they got their check. And now that's what's happening. Moore Park, by what they're doing and what they just tried to do to my client for bringing us here this way, they're now starting to control how trucks roll. And your staff is without the tools to deal with it, and you're not going to see it. And maybe that's just a little too raw, but that's the truth that my client's experiencing, and that's why we're frustrated. So I apologize for going as long as I did, and I appreciate your cutting me the slack to do it, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Peter, I have a question for you. Is there any reason why Grimes Rock trucks should go Grimes grade with a northern haul route and a southern haul route through the, through the CUP? They don't use, do they use the grade?
No.
And there's no reason for them to use the grade, is there?
No, no. And, and a truck, it never's going to use the grade because it's a nightmare going up and going down. And that's why in 2013, when the county said, how are we going to deal with Moore Park, my client spent well north of a million dollars building and going through the process of an internal haul road to move the vehicles to the southbound entrance and control them in and out there so that none of my client's truck trips use that grade. That's the practical.
Right now, I'm talking about the north. You've got a, you've got an entrance on 23 going north, too, that comes through the CUP, don't you?
That, there are two entrances to the mine.
Right.
One is at the top of what you're seeing here. Thank you, Brian. One's at the, there we go. One's at the top. That's where you go out, make a left, go down to Fillmore.
Okay.
The southbound is all the way down at the bottom. It's off this map.
Right.
And so what the county said, when we worked this out with Mr. Baca and staff, they said, build a road, my client built a ribbon of road through his property to move any vehicles that are on site, that are going to go southbound. They have to move internally. They never go over the grade, and they go through a controlled, southbound-only entrance or exit.
Right. But what I'm concerned about now.
Does that make sense to you?
Yes, but I, I just want specifically, the northbound traffic, the 200 trips on Saturday are all going to go through that southern entrance.
Negative, northern. They're going to go through.
No, excuse me, northern, now I'm doing it. Northern entrance.
Correct.
So there's absolutely no reason for your people to use the grade?
Correct. The, the, the southern entrance, which was built specifically to control any trucks involving Moore Park, is under the underlying CUP that remains in effect, shut on Saturday. Can't go, can't use it. So the trucks have to use the north, which means they're only going to go through Fillmore. They're never going to touch the grade. And when I said that to staff, they said, well, what about the knuckle-headed independent guy that chooses to do something stupid and go up the grade and through Fillmore? What are we going to do about that? Because we can't control the, the, the use of public highways once a truck's on it. And so the answer was, okay, they can only be vehicles owned or controlled by my client. So my client now has the structural ability to say, you will make a left. Because there's drivers, the, the drivers are people that my client controls. They're either employees, or they're people hired by my client to do this. So my client can control their use of which way they go. And that's why the language is that way. Only Grimes-owned or controlled vehicles on Saturday. So we can control that there's no knucklehead going to the right.
I have a question regarding the agreement that you were referencing.
Yes, sir.
Is that an ex, copy of an executed document?
Um, I have the executed one at the office. Moore Park attorney was kind enough to provide it to me. This is the one I just happened to.
Does staff have a copy of that agreement?
Yeah, I, I have not seen a copy of the agreement. We typically read about them in the paper. I'm not sure if Mr. Baca has a copy.
Could you provide Kim with a copy of that agreement?
Sure, you want me to give her the executed one? I can email that when I go back to my office.
The executed one.
Absolutely, I'll be happy to provide that.
Is this part of a, a larger scheme maybe to do a bypass to combine all the traffic to avoid Moore Park to improve a separate roadway? Why?
Well, you know, so, um, I can't tell you what's in anybody's mind. I can only tell you what I read. And it's, it's not tied, as I read it, it's not tied to the SR 23 bypass, I think is what it's normally referred to. It's tied to in doing some improvements or one or two intersections in the city.
Thank you. We have more questions. We're going to take a five-minute break, folks. For the applicant, Peter, is anyone else speaking?
Uh, no, I have Mr. Cochran, who is the owner of Grimes Rock, who's available to answer any questions or provide any clarity or anything if anybody wants to.
Well, he'll get a, do you want a question? Mr. Cochran, could you come up, please? Please state your name and address, sir.
My name's Russell Cochran. My address is 552 Villa Candios in Camreal, California. And I'm the owner of Grimes Rock. Any questions? Feel free.
Yeah, I had a question about ingress and egress, in particular ingress, since much has been made about the fact that if the CUP approves activity on Saturday, that the City of Moore Park would not be impacted.
Yes.
And my question was, do all those trucks that will be coming in on Saturday originate north of the mine, or does those trucks, some or all those trucks originate south of the mine as such coming through Moore Park?
All the trucks that are going to come in on, come in or, or out on Saturday will be all northbound. They'll, they'll either be my trucks or, or hired trucks that are hired by Grimes Rock. So none of them will come in the southern entrance. We'll have control completely on Saturdays. Saturdays is not open to the public.
Right.
Anyway, so there's not, not going to be no outside truckers that's going to come in there that we don't know. And the, and the southbound gate will be locked. It won't be open on, on Saturday.
So none of the trucks that, that you would have control over that might operate on Saturday would have any reason to come through Moore Park to reach the mine?
No.
Is that what you're saying?
No, we use the trucks, pretty much, there's a, there's a certain amount of trucks that we hire that work for us exclusively, and they, they can't, they won't be able to come through the southbound gate. So they're going to have to originate off of 126, period.
So if a truck starts its engine in Simi to come to the mine, you're saying they would have to find their way onto 126 to get to 23?
We will not, we will not put a truck from Simi Valley up there on Saturday morning.
So all the trucks that would come in.
All of them's going to come in through 126.
They'll be southbound on 23 to the mine and then northbound exit.
Yeah, we will strictly enforce Saturdays only coming in.
Correct. Now Saturday only is what we're talking about.
Right.
Okay.
So. Any other questions?
Well, that answered mine. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Nothing further.
Thank you.
You'll get a chance to rebut, though, if you need to. That's, that's it for the applicant, the appellant, please. City of Moore Park, you, sir? You're up. Please state your name and, and address.
Thank you, Chair Commissioners. Dave Bobart, City of Moore Park, 799 Moore Park Avenue. I'm appearing on behalf of the city council regarding the appeal of the, to the planning commission. You've received our letter from, from Mayor Parvin that explains in detail the city's position. The permit modification request includes a five-year extension of the conditional use permit, which is a significant expansion of aggregate production and hauling at, at the Grimes Rock Mine. County staff and, and the applicant have said the reason for the extension is because Caltrans held up the, the permit for the improvements to the southern entrance. Yet this project never shut down, and it continued to operate all the time, albeit under the, the pre-2013 permit level. As you've heard from Moore Park in the past, perhaps many times, the expansion would impact Moore Park, its residents, from trucks traveling to and from the mine using Highway 23 through Moore Park. Every day, over 1,000 sand and gravel trucks pass homes, schools, and many public facilities, including the city library and the Boys and Girls Club. It's acknowledged Highway 23 is identified in the city as a truck route. As a state highway, the city really has little choice on that matter. For many years, the city sought assistance from the county to mitigate the impacts associated with sand and gravel hauling to and from the mines in Grimes Canyon. As shown in the chart earlier, the city receives truck traffic not only from Grimes Canyon Mine, but from C-Mex, Wayne J., and sometimes, to a small extent, from Rancho San Cristobal as well. These quarries do have an obligation to mitigate the impacts associated with the heavy truck traffic. Let me speak a little bit about the, the C-Mex agreement as it was brought up. C-Mex came to the city, and they asked what they could do to mitigate impacts of their project. Their project proposal being a continuation of the currently approved 980 truck trips through the year 2065. It's no change from what's under the current permit. The, the agreement with C-Mex, and I'll be happy to send a copy to staff as well as the, the commission, is the deal is specific to address two specific intersections. Moore Park and High, and Moore Park and where First Street and Poindexter cross it, which is a misaligned intersection. City's preliminary estimate to improve these intersections is $13,600,000. C-Mex provides 11% of the trucks, 11% of the total traffic that goes through these intersections. Therefore, the agreement, the 1.5 million, would address 11% of the costs of the improvement just to these two intersections. And the $100,000 was paid upfront. The balance wouldn't be paid unless The balance wouldn't be paid unless the city actually incurred real costs in improving these intersections. It's a fair share contribution based on real expenses that would be incurred by the city. Moore Park's been willing to work with Grimes Rock to resolve this appeal without the need for this public hearing. In fact, as Mr. Goldenring said, they came to the city asking what, if they could have something similar to Semex. We came up with a number based on their contribution, fair share traffic, around 2.5% would be $335,000. And they, we couldn't make an agreement, and we're here. So, Moore Park's asking the planning commission to consider these impacts and require they be fully mitigated. And thank you for your consideration.
Just a minute. Do you have any questions?
What's your position with the city of Moore Park?
I'm the community development director.
Okay. So, you work for the city manager and/or the assistant city manager?
I work for the city manager, who reports to the city council.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Bobart, why hasn't the city of Moore Park done what's necessary to participate in the traffic impact mitigation fee program?
It's a dispute that the city and county staff have right now. We'll be meeting with county staff next week to discuss it and see if there's a way we can resolve the dispute on the fee program.
The state, excuse me, I'm sorry. The statement was made that the city has not passed or commissioned to participate in a traffic mitigation study that is viable and acceptable by the county of Ventura and the state of California, I assume.
We have a traffic impact mitigation fee agreement with the county. Its interpretation is in dispute, and our attorneys will be meeting with the county council and discussing that to try and resolve it. That's as much as I can say about that matter right now.
Okay, thank you.
We'd like to resolve it.
Thank you. County council?
Mr. Baca, is there some formal dispute going on between the county and Moore Park with regards to this that we're not aware of?
Well, I'm going to turn that over to Mr. Barnes.
Not that I'm aware of, or my office is aware of. Just giving the history, and I believe it was 2015, let me back up. So, the county's traffic impact mitigation fee program is run through the Public Works Agency. And so, in 2015, the Public Works Agency informed Moore Park that it couldn't collect any traffic impact mitigation fees on behalf of Moore Park, because Moore Park has, as Mr. Baca has said, has never done a fee study. And in addition to that, they've never, before the letter last night, they've literally never even told the county what fee they want us to impose. And so, in the past, as has been explained, the county Public Works Agency was incorrectly collecting fees for Moore Park based on traffic improvements and a formula and fee study that were done for capital improvements that needed to be done in the unincorporated county. And so, it's kind of apples and oranges. And so, we've told Moore Park, "You guys need to do your own fee study," you know, which is based on capital improvement costs and the amount of traffic, et cetera, to come up with a fee for improvements that you need in your city. And so, "Please get us that." And so, we've been saying that for a while. That's never happened. And so, I don't know, I'm not aware of that being a dispute. I think maybe the city has a different interpretation of what they need to do under the agreement, so we're happy to discuss that with them. But no, there's no formal dispute. There's no lawsuit or anything like that.
Back to the speaker. Can you add to that or clarify?
It's a dispute at a staff level right now, and that's what we're hoping to resolve.
Staff level between the city?
Between the county and city staff as far as collecting the fee.
Establishment.
Mr. Barnes is correct. The county informed us that they'll stop collecting the fee. And the fee that was collected in 2013 amounted to about $700-some dollars for this, the project as it was expanded back then, which really doesn't go anywhere when it comes to making improvements for a project of this scale that adds, you know, almost two, that accounts for 2.5% of the total traffic on Moore Park Avenue.
So, I'm hearing you say that the city of Moore Park is actively working with county staff to come to some resolution on this?
We've been discussing it, and we have a meeting next week to figure out what we need to do to bring resolution to this.
Thank you.
Mr. Baca, can you elaborate on that?
I'll turn it over to the director.
So, Commissioner Kestley, Mr. Bobart, first of all, I've worked with Mr. Bobart for 20 years. He's a great planning director there, and we've been able to work cooperatively on many issues, right? This traffic impact mitigation fee is something that is run by our transportation department and our public works director, and I'm happy to call him and see if he can come down and elaborate further on that. But it has been an ongoing dispute with the public works department and the city of Ventura about having a fee study done. There's supposed to be a predictable process when you come in, and you do a study, and you have ADTs, average daily trips, and you're supposed to understand, as a developer, the county charges $18, the cities charge $15, or another city charges $182. What is it, right, that you're going to understand at the end of it, that you're going to be accountable for? It's the same as a library impact fee, or a park impact fee. It's supposed to be predictable. It's not supposed to be negotiated, right, at the end, in a private agreement that the county is not even a party to. And so, it has been an ongoing discussion. We've tried to raise this issue many times, and, but Mr. Bobart is correct, there was an email that was sent out last week, asking, from the city to the county, asking if we could get together and discuss. And I think having a meeting and discussing a longstanding issue is always a great idea, and I'm fully in support of that. I imagine our transportation director and perhaps our public works director, Mr. Pratt, will be heading up that meeting from the county side, because it is an agreement that is done outside of the resource management agency or the planning department. But, yeah, the time has come, because it doesn't only impact mining, right? It impacts all the other things that we build around the city, and all of the other cities have been able to work it out. And so, I think it's, I think Mr. Bobart is correct, a meeting is going to occur.
Any further questions? Thank you, sir, appreciate it. Anyone else for the city of Moore Park to speak? Hearing none. Oh, I have a question. We touched on it briefly during the break, and that's that Broad Beach litigation, the potential impact on Highway 23. I don't know, I guess I'm addressing Jeff on this? Yeah. Jeff, could you describe the impact if Broad Beach is successful on Highway 123, or Highway 23?
Yeah, so, the agreement between Broad Beach and Moore Park states that Broad Beach shall send...
Is this with Semex?
No, no, the quarries are not parties to it. It's between Broad Beach and Moore Park.
Oh, okay.
And so, the quarries are included indirectly, they're specifically named in the agreement because they were, I'm sorry, the quarries being Semex and Grimes Rock are identified as the primary suppliers of sand for the Broad Beach project. And so, Moore Park was concerned that all the truck trips would go through Moore Park, or even some of the truck trips would go through Moore Park, from Grimes Canyon, obviously, to Malibu, where the project's located. And so, Moore Park and Broad Beach entered this agreement, saying that for any trucks going to or from anywhere, having to do with the, I'm sorry, any trucks supplying sand for the Broad Beach project can't go either through Moore Park, or even adjacent to Moore Park on, I think it's Moore Park Avenue, which is technically in the county, but, so the agreement prohibits all trucks from either going north or south on that county road, or any road, or State Highway 23. And so, it specifically says that all the trucks instead have to go north on 23 to 126. And so, in terms of traffic, the Broad Beach project is anticipated to generate at least 43,000 one-way truck trips initially, when they do the initial sand dump, and then four times after that, because they're, at a minimum, they have to do 300,000 cubic yard sand dump once every five years. And so, that, the total of that is a minimum of 215,000 one-way truck trips. And so, the way that Moore Park and Broad Beach have it set up, all those trucks are going to go through Fillmore, and the unincorporated county, and Santa Paula, and then down to Wells Road, down through El Rio, and then, you know, make their way down the coast that way.
So, absent some agreement with Grimes Rock, they're going to go down Grimes Grade?
Those trucks, yeah, they'll go, they'll go north on 23 over the grade, yeah, down through Fillmore. But it's, Mr. Goldenring alluded to this, I think it's difficult for planning to analyze that, because there's, well, first, I mean, we don't think the agreement's legal, and so, we're challenged, the county, we being the county, is challenging in court, so we think we can and will prevail.
Is it enjoined or stayed now?
It's not, no.
Are they doing it?
They're not, the trucks aren't rolling yet. They're supposed to start this fall. I'm not sure if that's still the plan. And I should say, Broad Beach is still apparently looking at other sand sources. I'm not sure if they've identified any. And so, there's still uncertainty about, obviously, the validity of the agreement, and that Broad Beach for sure is going to get sand from Grimes Canyon. And so, yeah, there's a lot of uncertainties involved with that, the whole arrangement. But it is a lot of truck trips, and each truck trip, and Moore Park has acknowledged this, each truck trip, instead of, so if the truck trips go south on Highway 23 from Semex, or from Grimes Canyon, from the mines to Broad Beach, each truck trip is about 40, I think 44 miles. But if they all go north instead, then that adds 16 miles to each one-way trip. And so, that's, you know, millions of extra traffic miles that are added as a direct result of this agreement. So, it's quite an extraordinary means of traffic regulation, and we haven't seen anything like it before.
Is it possible that Grimes Rock could allow access through the south and north haul road without a modification of their CUP? All that traffic?
To supply the Broad Beach project?
Right, to avoid the grade.
You know what, I'm going to, I'm going to, Mr. Baca's more familiar with these permanent conditions than I am.
Just hold on, Peter.
I'll do my best to avoid the need for Mr. Goldenring.
You get a rebuttal, Peter.
I believe the question was, would it require a mod of the Grimes Rock permit to allow the Broad Beach trucks to go through their internal haul road?
And avoid the grade?
Yes, it would.
Okay.
Now, I would like to correct a number that Mr. Barnes said. He was, he was almost correct. He was doing well, right up until the end. And each, the difference in distance, it's an extra 5 million vehicle miles traveled over the Broad Beach project by going around through Fillmore and doing the loop through the county, rather than the most direct route. So, I just wanted to point out that that's the overall context. And of course, those 5 million vehicle miles also have air emissions as well, that are not evaluated in any sequel context. So, I just wanted to add that.
Would that not change the LOS of Grimes Grade to just ridiculous?
Well, it depends on what would happen on an individual day as to how much was going. But, you know, the amount of truck trips, remember, they would still be within the permit limits of whichever facility would have to, would be supplying that project. So, the truck traffic is anticipated. What's not anticipated is the additional 43 vehicle miles per trip to go around, instead of going the direct route.
It's just mind-boggling that that increase could be handled on 23 on Grimes Grade. Just mind-boggling.
And I should just point out two other things. One is the Broad Beach project, as it was described to the public and analyzed by the coastal commission, the state lands commission, it anticipated trucks going both north and south on 23 to disperse the traffic impacts. And so, the Moore Park agreement obviously concentrates all the trucks onto that single route. And so, yeah, those potential impacts haven't been concentrated, or haven't been analyzed either. And so, yeah, so it's the county's position, the agreement, Moore Park can't do the agreement, period, because it's regulating truck traffic that's outside of its jurisdiction, and it's regulating truck traffic on the state highway. But if it is somehow legal, then Moore Park certainly has to do the sequel analysis on its environmental impacts, which was never done.
The city of Fillmore is a plaintiff in that action, aren't they?
Yeah, the city of Fillmore and the county are both appellants now.
Mr. Goldenring, your rebuttal.
Thank you. And we've gone a little bit far afield of my client's project, but let me, if I can, both address a couple of comments from Moore Park, as well as perhaps give you some insight. The Broad Beach deal that is in litigation, my client's not a party to it, specifically references the two mines, because those are at least the two possible sources of what's qualified material for Broad Beach. My client's not in contract with Broad Beach. If Broad Beach were to come to my client and say, "We want to buy material from you," my client could only operate consistent with its CUP. And so, my client has a certain number of truck trips that are allowed northbound on the 126, and a certain amount that are allowed southbound through Moore Park. And so, whoever is the party purchasing the material, my client is obligated to act within that CUP. So, the Broad Beach transactions irrelevant to my client, other than if my client were to sell material to Broad Beach, the Broad Beach truckers would have to be controlled by Broad Beach under the secret deal with Moore Park, and only use the northbound route. But the number of trips, or when they could roll, or anything else, would ultimately be controlled by my client's CUP. So, the deal, in truth, is irrelevant to my client. The second reason it's irrelevant is because, given what I've described, my client is not allowed to have trucks exit the southbound and make a left, and then go down the grade. They have to make a right. That's the Caltrans requirement, and that was the requirement in the underlying 2013 CUP. So, the southbound entrance never would get used in that context around the grade that you, Chair Onstott, have been referring to. So, the truth of this is this is all about Semex, and we have, by the way, oh, he left, John Heck was here. He's the Semex planner, who was, who could perhaps give you some insight. And here's the nuance, although it really has not a lot to do with my client. This is all about, from a public policy perspective, how you do secret deals. The deal, the Broad Beach deal, was made by Moore Park secretly with Broad Beach, not public. And in the context of that, Moore Park didn't appear, object, or raise any issues through all the governmental agencies that Mr. Barnes was talking about around any transaction. So, those governmental agencies went off, like you folks did, and had staff reports, and looked at them, and where are the trucks going to go, and it included Moore Park and everybody. And nobody's there telling the... everybody. And nobody's there telling the deciding folks, the policy folks, any of the truth. They made a secret deal, much like the CEMEX deal here. And that's exactly what's going to happen now with CEMEX because the CEMEX deal that was made eliminates Moore Park coming in and having any conversation. So your staff's going to look at the CEMEX truck trips that are going to go through Moore Park because most of them are slated to go through Moore Park. That's, that's the logical route by which they mostly travel and have over the years. Your staff report, unless somebody changes how this goes down, will look at it that way. And will never look at the impacts of the truck trips that would be diverted under the secret Broad Beach deal, up and then down the Grimes Grade and in through Fillmore and on to Highway 126 because that's an aberration. It's not how trucks normally follow. It's not how a traffic engineer's going to analyze it. Nobody's going to drive a truck that way, up a grade and down a grade when, and it's much longer and every mile increases the cost of material. I mean, from a, from a material perspective, the material itself ultimately is a fraction of the cost of the cost of the transportation. So that's the price that's paid through this model that's starting to get aired now. And, and while, like I said, it's not really directly relevant to my client's minor mod app, it's a good thing that it's starting to get aired because you folks need to know about it. Because the model of Moore Park is they've now controlled the one mine that matters around Broad Beach, CEMEX. And CEMEX has monetized the unused truck trips because they have that delta. We know what they actually use, but they're going to have their thousand or eleven, whatever it is, 1100. The county's only going to look at the, those truck trips around how they are told they normally would travel in an expected manner, which is through Moore Park, which is going, is getting paid this money in this private deal. But the trucks are now, some large percentage of those trucks are going to move to another municipality. So the evilness of all this is what, what I think is starting to unfold. And I don't know the truth of this, but I've now heard rumor that a certain ag outfit who has a pumping patch in the area needed to try to avoid problems and they wrote a check in a private deal to Moore Park. And I'm going to, as part of what I'm doing, going to try to find out the truth of that. But think about from a planning process around what happens. And in part, it's affect, as I said to you today, what you do today sends a message because if Moore Park's allowed to do this, then any applicant for a county project goes to every municipality in the area, makes a private deal, tells your staff whatever, they don't tell them about the private deal. Your staff's off there thinking about traffic patterns and whatever. And it goes down at the planning director hearing. You folks never see it. The traffic studies are wrong because there's private deals controlling how vehicles move or impacts and the like. Whereas with a TIMF process, which, as I said, and Mr. Bobek didn't dispute it, that it was, this was discussed in 2013 in front of the board of supervisors who asked the question, 2013, where, where are you? Why haven't you done it? Can't you do it? We're happy to impose the fees in this process if you will do it. And they told the board pound sand in 2013. So here they are. They still haven't done it. And if you do a TIMF, it's a public process. You have the public studies. You have the analysis. There's public input in the process. County's involved. It's all transparent. It's not opaque. When money is charged under it, it's designated. It's predictable to applicants. It's designated money that the, that the recipients have to use for those projects. They can't just put it into the general budget and disappear. And that was one of the conversations in 2013 when Mr. Cooney was asked by, I can't remember which supervisor, well, if we, you know, if you do get money without this, what happens? And the answer was, to my memory, is it goes into the general fund. Well, that's not what's supposed to happen with traffic mitigation fees. They're, they're monies that are being taken from a, a project to be used for the public good, for a transparent, controlled, public process. And so this whole modeling of what's going on, which he admitted has nothing to do with the bypass, has nothing to do with 23, is a hundred grand into the general fund. And if and when they ever get around to doing something on two intersections, more, CEMEX writes the check. And that's what they tried to extract from my client. And we're just, we're just not going to go there. And what you heard from him was an admission of what I said, which is if my client would write the check for the 340 in some manner, enter into this private deal that you, your staff would never know about and we would never be here, there are no objections to anything. And all of the trips that they want to charge us for under this model are the ones from 2013. None are the 200 Saturday trips. They admit in their opposition and they admit in the communications with me that none of these 200 trips go through Moore Park because of the way it's structured. And all of the money and the calculation is based upon the 2013 trips, which aren't before you. So that's why we characterize it the way we do. It's not about what's happening here today. So I apologize for babbling. I appreciate your, your time.
Thank you, sir. Anything further from the city of Moore Park?
Chair Onstott and members of the commission, I have a few cleanup items. First, the, among the, the recommended actions of staff, including to grant the permit subject to the conditions of approval in Exhibit 5, actually, the conditions of approval that are actually before you, the ones that were approved by the planning director are in Exhibit 9. So it's just Exhibit 9. And it's, there were slight modifications made as part of the planning director's actions. And so Exhibit 5 includes the conditions that went to the planning director and then they were subsequently modified by the director. So it's Exhibit 9 that has the conditions of approval. That is the planning director approval package. And with that, I also want to say that the discussion that Commissioner Rodriguez has brought up about our, our trips going to come, trucks can come from the south, my answer was based upon the language in the condition that is included here. And I'm glad for Mr. Cochran standing up and, and, you know, helping me out and helping my memory. They are Grimes-owned and Grimes-controlled trucks. And, and when I read my own condition, I can see how the concern that Commissioner Rodriguez expressed was real based on the conditions, the way it's written. And so what I was going to suggest, if you could turn your packet to page 2 of 58 in Exhibit 9, the term O Jesus is not, is not helpful. Page 2 of 58, it's the conditions of approval in the planning director decision package. I can read it into the record if you can readily find it.
Go ahead.
Okay, well, what, but this is the condition of approval and this is a part of the project description and this is, this is a proposal by the applicant. And I want to just clarify the language so it's as clear as possible. So here's what it says regarding trucking on Saturday. A maximum of 200 one-way trips on every Saturday. Transport of material shall be conducted only by Grimes Rock-owned or Grimes Rock-controlled trucks that only deliver material to job sites reasonably accessible, reasonably accessed by State Highway 126. And, and what I'd like to add at the end of that sentence, and do not travel through the city of Moore Park, to make it specific. And then the next, the next bullet in that particular condition says, the permitee shall maintain a record of each loaded truck that departs from the facility on Saturday. In addition, the permitee shall retain the weigh tickets for each loaded truck. For Saturday trips only, the record and the weigh ticket shall identify the site of delivery, and I'd like to add, and the origin of the haul truck for each truckload of material exported and, and be provided to the planning division upon request. So those two slight changes of language will make it clear that there is no legitimate and way that truck will go through the city of Moore Park. And, and that sort of coincides with what Mr. Cochran just said on the stand here. A couple of other items. The, the analysis of the mining projects, all of them, that were conducted in the EIRs that were prepared, they make the best estimate of which, what the directional split of traffic is for the truck traffic. And it's based upon historic record, not on looking out in the future. But there is no limit on the split of traffic from any of the mining sites as to how much can go north and how much can go south over time. And it's recognized that, that, you know, for the next 10 years, maybe there's a lot of projects to the north along 126. And the following decade, the big projects will be along 101 and that will be the direction that material's moving. The decisions are made to approve a, a, a mining project or, or, you know, prove or deny based upon the best information available at the time the decision is made. But there, there is no directional limit on which way the trucks go. Historically, the Semex facility was determined in the EIR that was, that was certified for that facility that 93% of their truck traffic would go through the city of Moore Park, you know, virtually all of it. And in the case of Grimes Rock, 70% goes northbound and 30% goes southbound based upon historic records. And so, so, you know, to some degree, slightly, Mr. Goldenring misspoke, there really isn't a limit on which the directional of traffic. There's a limit on the use of the southern gate, but there's no actual prohibition against a truck going out the north gate and turning right and going up over the grade, even though that's a highly undesirable result. It's still legal and that's how the facility operated for years and years by 30% of their trucks turning right and going over the grade to go southbound toward Moore Park. So just wanted to point that out. The, I, I think it's been said by, by council and others is that the, what is missing in, in, in sort of Moore Park's calculation of a traffic fee that they believe they are due is that they don't recognize the simple concept of an existing setting. The, for Grimes Rock, for instance, was, was authorized in 1998 to operate with 300 truck trips a day. Those 300 truck trips are part of the existing baseline setting of traffic for the area and is not an impact of either the project in 2013 or of today. Now, of today, we now have the Grimes Rock facility operating at 460 truck trips a day. But again, that's part of the background existing setting of traffic and is not an impact of this project. The only impact of this project and, and the only impact for which a mitigation fee can be required. And so there is no mechanism to go back into time and look at the 300 trips that, that Grimes Rock was, was permitted in 1998 and say, you owe us a traffic mitigation fee today. It just, there's no mechanism, no legal mechanism to do that. And it's, and it's not allowed for under SEQA. So SEQA clearly recognizes an existing setting and that's related to proportionality and nexus requirements that are legal constitutional requirements of exacting fees from people. So again, it's 200, the, the project has three components, an extra five years, which they proposed and we don't see any, any problem with that. The, the onsite material, the onsite changes, which Mr. Goldenring correctly described as, as a better reclamation of the Best Rock and Grimes sites together. It certainly is the preferred environmentally to get rid of the high wall and have a consistent floor between Best Rock and Grimes Rock for a whole host of reasons. Biologic, drainage, visual. It's a much better reclamation concept that, that is coming to fruition with this design that they proposed. And then, of course, there's the 200 truck trips a day. So the actions before your commission is to whether or not to grant the modified CUP as requested by the applicant. But even, in addition to that, is even if you didn't grant any trips, there still is the reconfiguration of the site to end up with a better reclamation result for the two sites, the abandoned site and Grimes Rock. So with that, I'm available for questions. I believe Director Pearlheart has some additional comments.
Thank you, Chair Onstott. I don't believe, I think Brian just covered everything that was on my list, so I don't believe I have any additional comments unless you have questions for me.
Commissioners, any further questions? You want to take a minute to take a look?
Yeah.
We're, we're going to take just a few minutes to review our notes.
I don't like, I don't appreciate having to operate in a vacuum. And I realize staff has put everything in front of us that, that's available to them. But the applicant, applicant's attorney referenced the, an agreement, it's apparently a certified agreement between the city of Moore Park and CEMEX, or CEMEX as relates to the resolution of, that they, the city agreed, came to with that operator and offered to make available to staff a certified copy or a signed copy of that agreement, as I understand it. Can we include that even though that issue is, that particular agreement or document is not before us? It does have an indirect, at least an indirect impact on what we're trying to do today. And it makes us, it gives us the opportunity to become more familiar and aware with what the dynamics are as relates to the operations of these mines and the impact it's going to have not only to the city of Fillmore but also the city of Moore Park. How do we get that? And how do we incorporate it into the record, if we can incorporate it into the record for future reference?
Peter, do you have the executed copy of that agreement, a copy of it we could lodge for the record?
I have with me the document that went before the city council with the staff report saying it was going to be signed. I have my email from the city of Moore Park attorney.
Why don't you come up to the mic, Mr. Goldenring? I would, I would just say that the, the main components of the agreement have been described by Mr. Goldenring and also Mr. Bobard. And I don't think those are in dispute. And the agreement itself has been referenced. And so I think it's adequate for the, the record to incorporate it by, by reference. And I don't think we need the, the physical signed final copy here today in order to do that.
So we will get a physical copy for the file, will we not?
We, we will.
Okay.
Yeah, the, the signed copy. And if you have any other questions about the, the agreement itself, then I'd encourage you to, to ask even Mr. Bobard right now to make sure there's no misunderstanding about what the agreement says or does.
Mr. Goldenring, I think we've got it covered.
You do.
We'll have a copy in the file.
Yeah, I, I may have it by email. And if you give me two seconds, I may be able to just email it to you right now if you want. If you give me 30 seconds to try to put my fingers on it.
That's fine.
Yeah, or I, I'm sure that I could, if, if Mr. Bobard agrees that the document that was signed was essentially the one that went to the city council with labeled draft, you can have that right from me now.
I'd rather have the agreement, Mr. Goldenring. I want the agreement.
I get it. I'm, I'm working on it right now for you. Give me, give me 30 seconds.
Yes, sir. I think one way or another, we can get a copy of an executed agreement. Anything else, Richard?
Yeah, as relates to, as it relates to the agreement we're talking about between the city of Moore Park and CEMEX, they're operating within their cap or their capacity a number of trips. Is there any likelihood that they would have to come in for the commission or for planning, planning to, to transport and fulfill that Broadbeach requirement? If, in fact, the agreement judicially, within judiciary is found to be invalid, will they then have to come through the county to process what they're trying to do around the county?
You're talking about CEMEX?
Yes.
You know what, I'd hesitate to, and I think we should back up, the CEMEX CUP, it hasn't been approved yet, and it's still being processed.
Okay.
And so I don't, I don't want to go there.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's fine, thank you.
And also, I guess I would just point out, the Grimes Rock project before us today only involves Saturday trips.
Correct. I have a problem, a lot of problems, and they all pretty much relate to traffic.
As do I.
I'm real troubled, and I realize, you know, that the trips, trips that are being requested or proposed for Saturday are part of the total that we're authorized, that to this point are Monday through Friday. But I still have difficulty with putting, allowing more trucks onto the road on Saturday, particularly when you have additional vehicles, you know, with normal weekend activity that doesn't occur during the weekdays by the public. I'm also, I understand why Grimes is asking for the CUP to be extended from 2040 to 2045 and additional five years. I'm troubled by that. And I don't know if I want to go there on that extension for additional five years, given everything we've got in front of us and the things that are obviously on the horizon that we are only guessing at right now. I think the, I think the issue of Moore Park's appeal, I'm satisfied that this requested amendment to the CUP were Saturday activities allowed would have no impact on the city of Moore Park based on the representation that was made by the applicant on the origin and egress and exit from the mine via the north route, north gate. I'm comfortable with that. But still, the issue for me is still, do we allow it? If we don't allow it, it's a moot point, obviously.
Are you saying the five years or the 200 trips north, or both?
Oh, well, I'm talking, specifically, I'm talking about the trips north. But, but I'm kind of up in the air whether to approve it for another five years.
Do you have any more questions of staff, or I need to close the public hearing.
I, one question of staff, I guess, and maybe I missed it in the explanation. No, I don't. Like, I can't formulate it.
Maggie, do you have any questions?
I'm staff, ma'am.
I'm going to close the public hearing. Now, we're open for discussion amongst the commissioners. Anyone want to go first, or if not, I will, but...
So I have a couple of comments.
Maggie, a little closer to you.
Oh, I'm sorry. I feel very comfortable with the changes proposed by Mr. Baca under the conditions of approval. And I, I'm comfortable with that because my understanding is, if we don't allow this to move forward, it, the truck traffic is going to come elsewhere anyways, because there is still a need. And if it comes elsewhere, then it won't be conditioned for them to utilize the northbound way access roads. So we then are open to additional traffic going through the areas that we're most concerned about. And that's where I'm sort of coming down to in all of this. I do have to agree with Commissioner Rodriguez. I'm a little bit concerned about the five-year extension, only in that there are so many issues with regards to traffic. By extending it five years, are we just prolonging the ability to have that bigger discussion in 2040, moving it to 2045? And I'm not sure whether that's a deal breaker for me or not, but it's something to maybe think about. In regards to the process for the TMIF, the Traffic Impact Mitigation Fee, coming from my 30 years in the development world, it is very helpful for an applicant to have a transparent process with established fees and costs, so that they have that opportunity to factor that in to whatever it is they're going to do. And I, my concern with Moore Park is that I don't understand why they haven't participated in that. And I do appreciate that there does seem to be a willingness to do that now, but without something transparent, it makes all of our jobs very difficult. So I'm just kind of throwing that out.
Well, as to the three areas, if, in fact, the five-year extension is due to the fact that governmental approvals were not obtained in a reasonable period of time, I, while I have some of the misgivings of my partner here, I would vote for the extension, because it doesn't seem to be a matter of their own doing, but one brought on by governmental inaction or worse. As pertains to the modification, the internal workings, and the reclamation, I think that's perfectly appropriate and a great way to handle a bad situation. The big issue for me, and I think for all of us up here, is traffic on Highway 23. I was pleased to learn that Grimes will not be using Grimes grade, which is the worst of the worst. I live in the Santa Clara Valley. I drive that regularly. It is always a topic of conversation amongst the residents of the Santa Clara Valley, how bad and how dangerous the traffic on 1, on 23 is. With the use of the internal haul roads going to the north, at least we can say that Grimes Rock will be off that, and the 200 trucks won't be using the grade, and that's, that's something quite favorable. I had to be convinced of that, that, or I remain to be convinced, that 23 is safe with these 200 trips or without the 200. I think it's unsafe now. I think it's significant, I think it's a significant problem. And the thought of anyone's, this increasing the trips by several hundred is just mind-boggling to me, and I wouldn't be a bit surprised if the residents of the Santa Clara Valley put up barricades. It's terrible. It's not safe. I've been almost run off the road by trucks on numerous occasions, and there is nowhere to go, except over the side if you're unlucky. And I can't believe that because, even though we have approved all these trips, et cetera, and they've gone through a hearing process, that we can't ignore the health and safety of the people who use that road. But we are. It seems to me we are. And we feel, I feel kind of boxed in that the posture of this issue and what is at issue, I think the applicant has met, and staff has acted reasonably. But the bigger picture is, it's not safe. This is not going to make it safer. And I really don't understand what we can do about it, but, you know, I want to vote no to the 200 trips, but I don't think it's fair to the applicant under the circumstances. I'm prepared to move staff recommendation with Mr. Baca's amendments and the reference to the appropriate exhibit. I'm prepared to do that, but I don't like it. And if anyone thinks Highway 23 is safe, get out there and drive it. And if anybody thinks that 200 trucks are, traffic on Saturdays, there's no peak periods, get out and drive it, get up there at 8 o'clock in the morning, 9 o'clock. If you want to sit down at the bottom, he'll go to the golf course and watch the boats and RVs come by Saturday. It's just a different form of traffic. So I really feel hamstrung. I am forced to vote staff recommendation with the changes, but I don't like it. And if there's anything I can do about it, you can be assured I will do something about it. The safety factor, I mean.
I'll second the motion.
There's been a motion and a second. Richard, do you have anything to say?
Just a clarifying comment. I totally agree with your comments about the traffic. I understand that completely. It goes against my, my preference, my better judgment, my common sense even.
Yes.
But I think the applicant's done everything he can do to get compliance here. And I will back, I will backtrack my comments about the extension of the CUP. I understand where the applicant's coming from and the issue, the delay and the approval is no fault of his own. I'm troubled by the lack of transparency, transparency on the part of Moore Park's appeal request. There's obviously things going on, have been going on behind the scenes that we're not privy to. And given, given the applicant's reassurance that Saturday traffic would neither originate from the south or exit to the south, I'm prepared to follow staff recommendation.
We have a motion and a second. Let's vote. This is with the change in the exhibit number that Mr. Baca outlined and his amendment to the condition.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, just to read the, read the action item. It's Grant Modified Condition Use Permit PL 160097, subject to the conditions of approval, Exhibit Nine, comma, as modified at the planning commission hearing.
Correct.
And the record will include the alleged, the report that's been referenced here?
Yes, Commissioner Rodriguez.
Thank you for your participation.
Are we moving forward on the last item on the agenda?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Excuse me. I was trying to find my agenda in all the papers.
So it's just a report out from the planning director. So just really quickly, I wanted to go over your schedule coming up. And so you have an August 3 hearing to hear the continued use and increased operational intensity of an existing ag promotion facility, that's the Underwood Family Farms, on August 3. And on September 7, there is a hearing scheduled for the adoption of amendments to the non-coastal zoning ordinance and zoning maps for consistency with the general plan. So those are the only two items that I know by then. Hopefully, by the September 7 hearing, at least we should have five members back. That's all I had, unless you have something for me.
I do.
Yes.
I haven't discussed this with my fellow commissioners, but I would like you to, and if they concur, I would like you to make a request of the board of supervisors that they immediately fill the vacant position. I understand you tell me something's coming, but I'd like to go on record and tell them we need it.
Yes, so I did make a call up to the board office last week and was assured that there will be commissioner on the agenda in the next week or two, so before the board goes
So that means, what does that mean? I'm asking you to direct, send a directive to the, to the board of supervisors respectfully requesting the immediate appointment of a commissioner.
Yeah, and so the appointment of the commissioners is scheduled before the board, right? So the board members?
It is scheduled.
Supervisor Bennett and that supervisor's office.
You didn't say that. You didn't say you had something scheduled.
No, they would put it on the board. I haven't seen it yet, but it wasn't on last week's agenda. I assume it will be on next week's agenda, but I'm sure it will be on before the board goes dark. That board office recognizes and understands the importance of fulfilling the position, especially in the absence of Commissioner Lucas.
Right. Thank you, ma'am.
The board goes, the board goes dark in August?
Yes, they're dark in August four. I believe it's five weeks.
Okay.
Could be six. Thank you very much.
Madam Clerk? Oh, yes, let me drop a gavel.